Everybody, please stand for the flag salute.
To the flag, the United States of America, the republic where which stands under God, indivisible, perfect and just as whole.
Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, September 18, 2018. The time is 7:31. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, notice that this meeting was published in December 14, 2017, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Yes, we have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for July 17, 2018. I need a motion, please.
Move it.
Need a second?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for minutes, Mayor.
Reports, Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I have a code enforcement report for the month of August.
Commissioner Petracca?
Yep, I have my public safety report as well for police fire and ambulance squad and municipal court.
Bills?
Yes, Mayor, bill lists for September 18, 2018, public affairs, $105,281.98; revenue and finance, $2,613,590.60; public safety, $30,416.56; public works, $252,531.10; parks and public property, $35,655.16; water utility, $316,107.19; overtime payroll total for September 7, 2018, is $32,070.73; total payroll, $832,857.00; for a grand total of $4,186,439.59.
Move the bills.
Need a second?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
I'm voting aye, with the exception of 1801934, I vote no at this time.
Commissioner Tucci?
I vote yes, with the exception of item 1801934, which I'm voting no on because I do not believe it's a proper expenditure of taxpayer money and is outside the scope of the individual who would be attending this course.
Commissioner Evans?
I vote yes on the entire bill and I would disagree.
Commissioner Petracca?
I vote no, I vote aye except for 18-01934.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Public comment on agenda items only, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizen comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or residing officer of the majority on the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
For rewar, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Evans, you have went down here and you were $2,500 for roughies. What's that for?
It's not for anything, it was voted down by the Board.
I'm sorry?
It's not for anything, it was voted down by the Board.
Wasn't it on last one?
Yes, it was.
And what was that for?
It was pulled off of that agenda as well and not voted on.
Do you have any, anything saying it was voted down because it appears that it was paid?
It has not been paid.
Is there going to be an official statement other than me asking you this question that this was not paid for? What was the class for anyway?
It was for training for one of our employees in my department.
For, what was the training for?
Training was for management development courses, for a person to attend those courses, which is consistent with their job responsibilities and their duties, as determined by me, that were valid and necessary for them to do. Under the wall shack, that is my authority.
I looked that up the other day, under management, and I didn't see, I didn't see anything that was related to the wall shack. There was walk in there, but not walls. That's why, I've just gotten curious of the classes for.
The classes are for is an employee to attend management development classes that are very relevant to their job responsibility, which I fully investigated and reviewed before I made the determination to authorize it.
You can go to school at night for that.
And the courses are being taught at Roscoe's, and it's in a consolidated program. And if the courses were taken individually, it would be significantly more than the cost of this program.
Mayor, might I address that? Because I was one of the no votes on that, and I'd like to clarify it, all right? While the course is a worthwhile course, I do not believe it is within the scope of the employee that was being considered to be sent to that, all right? It's more or less a preparation for someone to become a township manager or a township administrator, all right? It is outside the scope of the clerk's responsibilities. While there would always be benefit, crossover benefit, from some of the ethics classes and some of the other management classes, it's a worthwhile class, but I do not believe it should be done on township time and paid for with township money. And I say that respectfully.
But I did look that up.
And I absolutely understand the Commissioner's point of view and perspective. I fully reviewed the program, and when it comes to issue resolution, negotiation skills, communication, which is fully related to the individual's position, I don't understand why that would be outside of the scope. I happen to be the former Chief Learning Officer for PricewaterhouseCoopers. As a president of a 50,000 student university, I understand curriculum course design thoroughly with over 20 years' worth of experience. This course is very relevant.
There are alternatives for the individual to take the class?
There are alternatives, there are.
Not add their taxes and taxes.
When, I have people in my department who attend training as relevant to their jobs, and I have paid for those that training as the Commissioner, because it's relevant to their job, as all Commissioners have done. I've made the determination to do this in a very thorough and comprehensive way. I do not understand why it was voted down, but I appreciate the perspective and most respectfully, I disagree, but that's for another day.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners on Agenda Items Only?
Continuation on that $2,500, what exactly did that entail as far as the person benefiting outside of the town from the course? Does that mean that the course is taken evenings, during the day? How long? Is it a one-week course, a two-day? I mean, what does this entail?
Mrs. Ravino, it's a multi-day course. It's taken, I believe it's taken during the day, as many of the training classes are for most of the employees of the township when they attend training.
That's an all-day situation?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, the full timing, but it could be part of, some of it could be part of a day, some of it could be a full day. But yes, it's in a curriculum structure. The title of the course I disagree with because it's open. It's also been a course that's been recommended by the New Jersey Municipal Clerks Association, many clerks that have attended this program.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board on Agenda Items Only?
Just one, just one further comment, Mayor, and I really don't want to beat this horse to death, because I think the course can be valuable, I just don't think that we should do it on our time or pay for it. The individual that is being spoken of does not negotiate, all right? Management skills are applicable to any of our employees, all right? And if it is so important, all right, and so imperative, then the individual should actually pursue that with their own time and their own money. That's all I have to say.
Let's go to Commissioner Announcement. Commissioners, do you have any announcements? I have one. Kathy Repichesewski, our CDBG Coordinator, has asked me to announce that there is funding for homeowners to repair their homes through the county and through HUD. That's a pass-through to the county from HUD. For home repairs, there's some income requirements, but it's on our website, and you can, if you have any questions, you give Kathy Repichesewski a call at Town Hall. Those are the announcements. Let's move to ordinance introductions. Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, I have. That's why, how about now? Better? Thank you. This is LoSAP ordinance, it's ordinance number 3390. This is for the volunteer firemen, ambulance squad as well, everyone who volunteers. It's in order to amend an ordinance codified in the Code of Township of Nutley, Chapter 96, entitled Lent of Service Award Program. I move that this ordinance be passed to the second reading and advertising in the Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on October 25. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
No.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Let's go to public hearings. Commissioner Petracca?
I have a public hearing on the parking placards, which we decided to go to stickers. It's ordinance number 3395, in order to amend an ordinance codified in the Code of Township of Nutley, Chapter 228, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article 6, Angling Permit Parking, Section 32, entitled Permit Parking. We did make one change that I'd just like to mention for the record, if I could, let's see. The only change, Alan, did we put this in the ordinance, or do I need to read that into the record?
You should just announce.
Okay. So the only change is that, or which changed to add Saturdays to days that there would be no parking enforcement as long with Sundays and holidays. This is going to be a six-month pilot program to see how this works out. Hopefully, I know it's been a long time coming, I see some of the residents here. After six months, we are going to reevaluate the situation through the Police Department, and hopefully this gives, you know, everybody that's having problems on that street, or these three streets, you know, some relief. So I'm hoping that it works, but it is a pilot program for the next six months. I would appreciate if people come to the meeting and tell us how it's working, or call me, you know, if there's pros to cons to it, or, you know, or what have you. You know, this was a big step for us to take. We never had, you know, permit parking such as this. In effect, by no means is this going to open up our overnight parking. I'm not on board with changing that at all, and I don't believe any of the Commissioners are. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing.
Anybody want to be heard on ordinance number 3395?
[inaudible]. [inaudible]. If I were a parking station in front of my house, I got to get up at 6:00, 7:00 in the morning with my car, it was 8:00, I wouldn't be there. It is not fair for all of us, I believe, if I had none of it, I would have to park. I took pictures. My biggest parking lot in the public parking space by the park gate is half full and three quarters full sometimes at the last. Took pictures, and they have high people at this parking lot. They got plenty of places to park. It's not a day, we're on one day.
Well, that's why we're introducing the ordinance tonight, and we're trying, in Highfield Lane is one of the streets, so we're hoping that this gives you guys some relief over there.
[inaudible].
There are people coming from all over. It's not only Nutley people, Nutley residents, there are people coming from all over.
We know.
Thank you, man.
So hopefully it's working.
Thank you, man.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Is this on LoSAP?
No. No.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. I've been here before to talk about this. My name is Bill Klesak. I live on 33 Highfield Lane. Quite frankly, the situation sucks. It's getting worse. I'm retired now, so I see a lot what goes on in the neighborhood, and every day there's at least 15 cars on Conduit and another 15 or so from my house down to River Street. My confusion is, what was it, a little over a year ago, there was an ordinance passed and signs were put up on Conduit and Highfield. Unfortunately, the signs were miswritten. They said something about parking, you can park from 6:00 to 10:00 a.m., which made no sense. The signs were taken down a week later. What happened with that ordinance? How come that's not still in effect? Because an ordinance was passed that there was no parking. Poles were put up. I noticed two of my neighbors have taken the poles out of the ground. They're not there anymore. I don't know what they did with them, but they're not there. Why was that ordinance? I don't know how it works. Was it just thrown out? Was it superseded by something else?
I would have to look into that, but I think that, you know, all the research we did, and I know you and I worked a lot on this together, and I visit you at your house and all that, you know, I really think that this is the best way to go. You know, it is a pilot program for six months, and I'm hoping that this really solves the issue down there. But we tried, you know, timed parking in some situations, you know, and, you know, again, you know, people had problems with that because they felt that they were paying taxes for their house and they should be able to park in front of their house, or if somebody came to visit, all that stuff. So, I mean, you know, we crafted this up a million times, you know, we're putting from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. This way, it defers the commuter parking, you know, because if you're traveling into the city, you know, most people leave early. And I really think this is, I believe it's going to work. I mean, I really do.
Well, so, so, do I have to pay for a decal then if I want to park from 8:00 to 10:00 o'clock? Like, how does that work?
Is it five bucks, I think, for the decal? Five bucks?
All right. So then if you don't buy one, then you just don't park from 8:00 to 10:00 o'clock in the morning? That's how that works? But then, now it costs $5, and where do you get that from?
We're going to announce it through the Police Department.
All right. So in other words, that other ordinance, that was just, that's gone.
I don't, I'm not sure if that was on your street. I don't recall it.
Oh, it was.
But, no, I'm saying that, I would have to, before I would comment on it, I got to go look at it and see what was done with it. I don't want to just talk off, you know, my cup, so to speak, without having the information in front of me.
Well, I.
Why, do you think that would, are you here to tell me, do you think that would be better?
Well, again, because of what was passed once before, and I know a couple of people up the top of my block who aren't affected by the parking, complained that signs were put up in front of their houses. Now, I'm not mentioning names, I know who they are, but they complained because they're not affected by the parking in front of my house and my neighbors here, all right? So they complained because, well, somebody can't park in front of their house for an hour or so. Quite frankly, that wasn't, that wasn't my problem, but that was their problem. You know, somebody at the lower part of my block actually went around and had a petition signed, right? People here, we signed a petition. Now that's just, that's, like you said, you're going to have to look into it, but I don't understand what happened.
Well, let me say, let me say this to you, you know, we're trying to move this forward, and when I was going through this, there was people on your block that were against the permit parking, or putting up signs, and then, like I said, their kids couldn't park there, you know, so, I mean, that's why I decided to do it for six months, because we do need to go get some feedback and see what the people want, because like I told you, we're an extension to the people. You know, obviously, I don't live on your block, you know, and in front of my house, I can park, you know? But I don't think it's fair to you guys to have to put up with that, you know, there's not a parking spot to be found because of this commuter parking, and like you said, it's a lot of people that don't live in town that are parking there also. So, you know, I, we went to other towns, you know, our chief is an FBI Academy graduate, you know, he's on board with this. He thinks that it's a good idea, and, you know, I can't tell you the tremendous amount of work that we put into this.
I have no problem with this.
Yeah. So I'm saying that, you know, let's try this for six months, and, you know, you have my number, you absolutely know where to find me, and keep me informed, because we want the feedback to see, you know, in six months if we're going to make this permanent or not.
I just want to find a way to stop commuters from parking on.
Well, if that, I have to tell you, I mean, if that doesn't solve the problem, you know, I would almost be lost for words of how you're going to ever stop that. I mean, if people are willing to park there and get a ticket every day, you know, maybe it's cheaper than parking in the city, I don't know, but, you know, hopefully they, you know, follow the rules. Okay?
Okay, good enough.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask what might be a silly question? Why were the signs that, from the old ordinance, taken down? And who took them down?
They didn't, they read parking from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. It was simply a misprint of signs. Should have said, no parking.
I think they were misprinted.
And it said parking. So what the heck was the good of putting it up? I didn't even catch it at first.
So there was, I just wanted to say, so there was an error on the sign, the signs were taken down, and nothing else was posted?
Exactly.
To correspond to the ordinance that was passed?
Right.
I think the signs corresponded to the ordinance. The ordinance was.
Oh, so the ordinance was flawed? Oh, well, that's a reasonable answer. Okay. At least we have an answer.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to be heard on ordinance number 3395? Move to close the public portion of the meeting? Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. I move the ordinance. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye, on the basis that it will be thoroughly reviewed in the next six months and the determination will be made of its value.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Let's move on to resolutions. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My first resolution this evening reads as follows. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA 19:44A-20.5, and whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has a need to acquire specialized professional services for a New Jersey licensed certified tree expert for forestry services throughout the Township of Nutley, and whereas the Municipal Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a request for qualifications for Township Forester, now therefore be it resolved that the request for qualifications shall be due on Wednesday, October 10, 2018, at 3:00 p.m., addressed to Municipal Clerk, Nutley Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas on Sunday, October 7, 2018, the Nutley Velvle Columbus Day and Italian Heritage Month Parade Committee will celebrate its 36th Annual Columbus Day Parade Festivities commemorating Columbus's historic village to the new world, and whereas the Parade Committee has a long history of commemorating Columbus Day each year in the Township of Nutley, which is looked forward to and enjoyed by both spectators and participants alike, and whereas the Nutley Velvle Columbus Day and Italian Heritage Month Parade Committee will celebrate its annual honoree dinner on Thursday, September 27, 2018, at Nanina's in the Park, and whereas this year's grand marshal is Andre Domeno, and whereas Andre Domeno is joined by the Lifetime Achievement Award recipient, Vito Scarpelli, the Italian Heritage Award recipient, Joseph Palambini, Velvle Woman of the Year, Jeanne Lombardi, Velvle Man of the Year, Anthony Sessa, Nutley Woman of the Year, our own Sam Corella, Nutley Man of the Year, Thomas Pizzato, 2018 Renaissance Man, Anthony Dalvo, 2018 Business Leader, Michael Mafucci, along with Community Excellence Award recipient Barbara Hirsch, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, join with the citizens of Nutley to salute and congratulate Grand Marshal Andre Domeno, Lifetime Achievement Award recipient, Vito Scarpelli, Italian Heritage Award recipient, Joseph Palambini, Velvle Woman of the Year, Jeanne Lombardi, Velvle Man of the Year, Anthony Sessa, Nutley Woman of the Year, Sandra Corella, Nutley Man of the Year, Thomas Pizzato, 2018 Renaissance Man, Anthony Dalvo, 2018 Italian Business Leader, Michael Mafucci, and Community Excellence Award recipient, Barbara Hirsch, as they will be honored at this dinner. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
I vote aye, and I'd just like to congratulate our own Sam Corella that does so much for all of us and has never said no to anyone for anything, so I'd like to congratulate you, Sam, and will be there to support you, so I very proudly say yes. Why don't you give a wave, Sam, so everybody knows who you are?
And happy birthday.
Aye. That's right. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire the services of a professional real estate appraiser to assist with litigation support in the matter of Sutton versus Roach, and the Township of Nutley has a non-fair and open, and non-open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 1944A-20.4, 20.5 as appropriate, whereas Hendrick's Appraisal Company, 7 Hutton Avenue, West Orange, New Jersey, has submitted a fee schedule to provide said services, the total of which is not to exceed $5,000. The anticipated term of this contract is 12 months, from September 19 through September 18, excuse me, September 19, 2018, through September 18, 2019. Funds will be available on account 801-204-205, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Whereas Hendrick's Appraisal has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that they have not made any reportable disqualifying contributions to political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. And whereas the business disclosure entity certification and determination of value be placed on file with this resolution, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley authorize the Mayor and Municipal Clerk to enter into a contract with Hendrick's Appraisal for the above services not to exceed $5,000. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Yes. Whereas peace is not merely the absence of war and violence, but a condition where society achieves a balance of prosperity, security, justice, and hope. Whereas peace is necessity for everyone to achieve health and define the World Health Organization, whereas in the effort to promote peace and walk collaboratively with other cities and nations, Nutley helped the Pathways to Peace event in 2015 by creating a street tapestry depicting solidarity and unity, and whereas the community leaders of Nutley are committed to establishing peace in our town, to promote economic opportunity and improve the quality of life of the people of our town. Whereas the United States has designed the 21st of September of each year to be the International Day of Peace devoted to commemorating and strengthening the ideas of peace both within and among all nations and peoples. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, that Nutley be proclaimed to be a city of peace. Be further resolved that September 21 of each year, to be, excuse me, be further resolved that September 21 of each year be the Township of Nutley Day of Peace. I move the resolution. But before I do, back in 2015, we had people from Honduras come in, and they did all that sand art on Franklin Avenue. It was really something to come out and see. It was beautifully done. It was nice to have people from another country come here and do it. Sam, I don't remember the woman's name that we worked with on that. Yes, yeah. But at any rate, there was a lot of people involved, and if we could do something down Franklin Avenue, I think it would be another breathtaking day and a step in the right direction. I move the resolution.
May I second?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Lori Castro, an employee in the Department of Public Safety, be granted a medical leave of absence without pay effective September 5, 2018, through October 5, 2018. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations. Rotary Club of Nutley, license number 3218, off-premise 50/50 cash raffle, to be held Thursday, November 15, 2018. Friends of the Phoenix Center, license number 3318, off-premise 50/50 cash raffle, to be held Tuesday, November 13, 2018. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved, and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue the raffle license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
It's resolution number 20718, resolution authorizing the Township of Nutley to sign the NJDEP Treatment Works Approval Permit Application on behalf of Quest Diagnostic Incorporated for Construction of a Diagnostics East Regional Testling Facility, 1153 Bloomfield Avenue, Clifton, New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas bids for the Harrison Street Improvement Project, Section 3, Franklin Avenue to Bloomfield Avenue, were received and opened on Wednesday, July 12, 2017, and whereas DNL Paving Contractors 675 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, was the low bidder, and whereas the bid for the Harrison Street Improvement Project, Section 3, Franklin Avenue to Bloomfield Avenue, was in the amount of $273,173.99, and whereas the Township of Nutley entered into a contract with DNL Paving Contracts for the amount of $273,173.99, whereas change order number one to the contractors has been authorized for an increase in the amount of $13,989.63, and whereas funds are available for ordinance number 3345A, count number GO4104401, in the amount of $13,989.63, have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution. Whereas the original contract is being increased in the amount of $13,989.63 for a total adjusted contract of $287,163.62. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order number one is attached, is changed from the contract previously made by the Township with, as the project known as Harrison Street Improvement Project, Section 3, is hereby authorized and approved. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas bids for New Jersey Department of Transportation, Safe Roots, the School Programs for the Township of Nutley were received and opened on Wednesday, March 2, 2016, and whereas AJM Contractors 300 Color Road, Clifton, New Jersey, was the low bidder, whereas the bid for the New Jersey Department of Transportation, Safe Roots, the School Programs for the Township of Nutley was in the amount of $319,634, and whereas the Township entered into a contract with AJM Contractors for the amount of $319,634, and whereas change order number one to the contract has been authorized for a decrease in the amount of $2,027.36, and whereas the original contract amount is being decreased in the amount of $2,027.36 to be credited to ordinance number 3295A, GO4113401, and to be reflected in adjusted contract price of $317,606.64. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order number one is attached, is changed from the contract previously made by the Township of Nutley with AJM Contractors for the project known as Safe Roots, the School Program for the Township of Nutley, and is hereby authorized and approved. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clark?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone, provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the forum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Maria Baza, 209 Highview Lane. It's really not a question, more of a statement that I would like to, at last meeting...
Mrs. Baza, please speak into the microphone.
Can't hear me?
It's hard to hear you. Yes. Thank you.
At last meeting, Mr. Evans said to me that he was, he took umbrage to the fact that I made a statement relative to the information going on about the building inspector. Well, I take umbrage to the fact that you vehemently, or I guess I can't speak directly to you, but you vehemently stated that you were taught to give back. You informed us that your salary is only $2,500, but in doing a little investigating, I found that you get more than, not just you, all of you, get more than $2,500. You get health benefits, which the town pays for, which are tax-free. You're able to, you know, give jobs to friends and family, and that's at taxpayers' expense. So don't make it sound as though what we ask you, we're infringing on your rights, because I don't think that that's appropriate. And last time you said you took umbrage to what I said, and I'm sorry for...
Mrs. Baza, I apologize to you for any misinterpretation.
Please speak louder.
I apologize to you for any misinterpretation of what I said. What I took umbrage to was a suggestion that this was a good old boys group.
Yes, that's right.
And I did not, and I did not care for that statement. As far as your inquiry regarding the discipline of an individual, I have no ability to share that with you because it's not allowed, right? So I just can't do that.
Yeah, but I, from what I also found out is that the, that it's not the individual who's being sued, or whatever you want, for lack of a better word, he's not a public employee. So why can't we know that? And so it's not covered under civil...
The individual that is being, that has been disciplined is a public employee, and that's as far as I can go.
But also, isn't there, isn't there another individual who's not a public employee that's involved in this?
Another...
The builder, right? The builder who was...
And that's, that's in, in being reviewed with counsel, which I've shared very specific facts on, as much as I can share at this point in time. But, so there is significant...
So when, when will we know?
As soon as it's resolved, I hope that, to have that done by the October 2 meeting. That's my desire.
October 2? Is that what you said?
It's the first meeting in October. That's my hope. But I, but as far as what is being discussed with that individual, I have been advised by counsel that as much as I would like to share it, I'm not allowed to share it because it's unresolved at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Joan Rimino, 48 North Road. We keep talking about this individual. I have never heard the name mentioned. Is that for some particular reason? Why isn't his name on the record?
Ms. Rimino, the discipline of employees is a confidential matter. It's not for public consumption.
Sir, he is not an employee. The builder is not an employee.
Ma'am, I'm not talking about the builder.
Well, I am.
You asked about the employee, and I'm telling you...
No, I, I did not. I said the builder. His name is not in the record. At least I have never heard it mentioned. As many times as I've been to these meetings, his name has not been exposed, if you want to call it that. What is his name?
Miss, ma'am, the name of the developer, if we get a resolution, will be made plain to you in a written document by the commission. It has not been resolved yet, and that's the answer that I'm going to give you. Until it's resolved, it's a potential litigation matter, and I'm not at liberty to discuss it in detail. Commissioners have committed to producing the copy of the document for the public, and I'm sure that is still the case.
So it's against the law for you to give the public his name?
No, ma'am, I didn't say it was against the law. When you're dealing with litigation, potential litigation matters, you need to keep them confidential, and I'm not at liberty to discuss anything, including any of the identities of the individuals involved, the corporate structure, there's corporations involved and LLCs. So until it's public, I cannot reveal it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Rory Moore, 462 Chesnut Street. Mr. Evans, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but I'm looking at Rutgers right now. What was the name of the class that was being considered? I'm curious, because I looked at the site last week, when you had the other numbers in there, and this week, and for some reason, I just don't get this warm, fuzzy feeling that this is the end of the process to try to get this through. And I'd like to know, what is the name of the class? Because they have several programs.
Mr. Moore, I've already commented on it, as far as I'm going to comment. As far as the action of the Board, it's not a matter before the Board or the public because it was voted down. So therefore, I have no comment, any further comment on it.
But to end it, to basically end it, I won't see this on the, on the bill list again in the, in the future?
As far as...
Trying to get it, trying to get it through?
As far as I'm concerned, it should have been voted this evening, but as far as, but as far as it is right now, I don't know what the future holds, and I won't speculate.
So if you make your second attempt to do, a third attempt, I guess, will you at least publish the name of the class? Because there's several programs here.
At that time.
At that time. So you're going to try it again?
I have, I have no position on it right now.
Okay, because you were saying, management skills or management, and on the website, it's like, there isn't any.
I didn't say it was on the website. I didn't say management skills. I said management development programs, and it's a very relevant course to what not only the individual does, or this position, but it's actually very relevant to many of the senior positions that we hold in town. So I have my own view on that. The Board has, has taken another view on that. I don't want to comment on it any further because it's not a matter pending right now.
If it comes up again, I would appreciate if you at least put down the class.
Thank you for your advice.
Mayor, can I, can I respond, please?
Sure.
Can I respond? I don't know what all the secrecy is about here.
I don't know either.
The name of the course is Master of Public Administration, 100% online. We have a difference of opinion. I respect the Commissioner for his abilities, all right? This is just one issue that we do not agree on, all right? But it's no secret, there's no cloak and dagger, you know, item going on here.
There just appears to be cloak and dagger.
I, I understand that, and that's why I'm telling you what the name of the, of the program is. That's all.
So we're going to, we're going to do this. I have never voted no on a bill list item for any of you. I trust my commissioners fully, under the wall shack, to make a determination of what you need to do and why it is necessary. I trust all of you to do that.
This is not a trust issue.
This, this is, it absolutely is.
This is not a trust issue. This is a difference, this is a difference of opinion, and you feel strongly one way, and I feel strongly another way. And I think all the people here...
And in the past, and in the...
Let me finish, let me finish. I'll give you your time. And everyone else that's listening, all right, is entitled to know. There's no secrecy here. This is not the old USSR.
No.
This is the Township of Nutley.
There's no secrecy here. My position is, is there's not a matter before the Board. As far as what the public disclosure on it, full disclosure on it. If you want to go through the curriculum of the course, I'd be happy to go through that. I don't actually think it was necessary.
I know what it is. He's asking you. I don't know what the big deal is. Just tell them. Just tell them, and it's over.
Thank you. It simply is a matter of my, my preference. You've decided you wanted to go further. I was trying not to go further, right? But very clearly, this program is not only relevant to the individual I was sending, it's relevant to many of the people, the employees of this town who are in positions of management responsibility, all of them. I think they all should take this course, and that's my opinion, all right? But, and that's my view.
And you're entitled to.
And I made that, and I made that determination in my department, under the wall shack, with very valid reasons. And I would have expected, and I also would have expected, that if I was going to get an objection from it, I would have heard it before I heard a vote tonight.
Well, if you check your email, you got it.
I exclude you from that, or you did do that. I did not hear from anybody else. I do not value the fact that the courtesy that I think this Board owes one another was, was actually sidestepped on this issue. I don't understand why, but it does not belong here, and I don't like the direction of where it's going.
Commissioner, I...
Well, well, excuse...
Go ahead, go ahead.
First of all, I was one of the ones that did not get the question you, because frankly, this is my fault. I didn't have time to read what went on. But I've got to tell you, I object to your tone, implying, implying...
My tone?
Yeah, your tone, when you say you have never voted against any of the commissioners. No, maybe business as usual has to come to an end here.
Yes, yes. This isn't business as usual. I'm sorry, this is necessary business.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, please.
When you start to say to me, "Business as usual has to end," and the work that we've done, and what I've led in this department to lower the cost of operations, dealing with the matters that are before us, I'm sensitive to the phraseology that you just used, because not only you, but Commissioner Petracco, Mayor Scarpelli, Commissioner Tucci, and myself have worked tirelessly to reduce the cost of operations for the benefit of the taxpayers, and we do that every single year, and we start months in advance.
And I haven't.
So I disagree with your inference.
And I haven't.
You have. We all have.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Acknowledged, yes, and I've said, all of us, all of us. And the inference that we, that we haven't been doing that, I believe does more damage than it does...
Let me ask you a question. How do you get the inference that I said something like that? And you know what the problem is in this world today? Everybody has something to say about the person who said what they said. I clearly did not say that. I clearly did not make an inference that people weren't... Business as usual to me is, is when you get a bill list, okay, and a person like me, maybe I didn't go through the whole thing, as I said, I didn't understand it, okay? Business as usual, well, I'll just rubber stamp it because, you know what, this is the way business has been. And I don't think that we should be doing that. I'm not saying you're doing it. I'm not saying that any particular person's doing it, but I just don't think that's fair and that's right.
Yes, I agree with that. Commissioner, I don't disagree with you. I objecting to the suggestion or the inference that we are behaving business as usual. I don't think we have been doing that. We've been working very hard together to change that mantra.
Well, I have to respectfully disagree with you that I have no idea how you come to the conclusion that I made an inference that you guys, okay, were conducting business as, "Let's just do it and get it over with." That's the interpretation I get from you. But my point is this. The tenor and tone, that's what I was speaking about with regard to what you were saying, in my view, since you expressed your view, was accusatory. It was accusatory as if we did something terribly wrong. We shouldn't be taking these things personal. Look, I will say, you included, we're all looking out for the best interest of the taxpayers. In this particular case, I had some questions, questions in my mind. I didn't have time to see you and talk to you about it, so I voted no. Will you bring it up again? Maybe you will. Maybe at that time with an explanation that at least is to my satisfaction, I'll go for it. But I don't understand what the rush is. I don't understand why everything has to be done, one, two, three, bing, bang, boom, as we're sitting here. That's all I'm saying. So that's my point of view. I respect yours. I wish you would respect mine. And I've got to tell you, you know, it's something that we should not allow with regard to protecting the integrity of this institution. We should never take these things personal, never. It's business. It's business on behalf of the public. That's all I'm saying.
Commissioner, I respect your opinion. I recognize that it's business. I object to the business element. I know it's not personal. I object to the business element of it. And you and I can take that further offline. I'll speak to each of you offline about why I feel the way I do and why I'm feeling the anger that I have right now and the frustration that I have right now.
I'd rather you do it right here so we could hear it too. If this is going to be a classroom and a vote on it, you shouldn't speak to each individually. You should at least speak to the public so we all hear it.
The simple fact, as I've shared, is that I have evaluated this program. The course title that it refers to, I don't agree with because it's not just for public administrators, it's for others. I spoke to Rutgers. I know the program. I went through it. I've looked at the design of the program and the elements that are in it. And I did that because I believe it's very valuable training for our employees to take. And training is necessary for everyone. It's not something that anybody who is in an executive position ignores the development of their people. I believe that very strongly, and I would take that position only because I've spent my career at a very senior level driving. I'm the former chief learning officer of PricewaterhouseCoopers. I did that role. I was nationally recognized for it, and I understand curriculum design, course design, and programming thoroughly. I would not ever make a decision that I believe is wasteful of the taxpayers' money, ever. I make my decisions based upon the fact that I believe it's highly relevant and valuable for our people so they can serve the public better.
And there are other ways of paying to take in this class other than the taxpayers paying for it. There are other alternatives.
And I appreciate your opinion that you're suggesting that any employee in the township of Nutley who needs to develop themselves and do training should pay, do it at their own expense. I don't agree with you.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but there are other methods. The taxpayers just don't have to pay for everybody to take a $2,500 class. There are other ways. There's night school. This is not offered solely at one time in a day. That's it. There's other times. I'm looking at the schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, for your point of view. Yes, people can go at night, they can go on weekends, they can go at other points in time.
Yes. There's other alternatives.
And if there are programs that are at this value level and this design level that provide this value at this cost, because these programs at this design level, if they were taught individually at night or on the weekend, would cost significantly more by several thousand dollars, I would appreciate, I would agree with you, and I would go look for that. But the fact is, it's a very efficient design. It's a very reasonable price for the content of this course.
And it's very expensive for us.
And when you, and in my budget, training is a valuable thing for the taxpayer. And the fact that if training helps employees, not just one, but all of them, do their job better, more efficiently, and that we can work with fewer employees because they're trained better and they can do their job better, I don't see how that's more expensive for the taxpayers.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd just like to add my comments if I can. First of all, I apologize for not calling you today, Tom, but today was the first time since I've been sitting on this board that I got a bill list that only had public safety on it. That's the first thing. The second thing is, all these emails that have been going back and forth, I'm still working. I got to tell you, it's been overwhelming. So that's my first part of the statement. My second part of the statement is, everybody has voted no, except for you, Joe, for stuff that I brought to the table. You, Commissioner Tucci, I don't know if you've ever voted no. And I think that's healthy, Tom. I do. I think that it's healthy to disagree at times, and I think it's healthy that we have these talks and sometimes air it out. I don't have an issue with anybody. I just happen not to have all the facts tonight, and I didn't feel comfortable voting yes on something that I'm not well schooled in. And I know this was the second time around that we pulled it the last time, and again, I apologize, but just to, you know, to go down that path of, you know, I never voted no, that's just not true. I mean, you know, maybe not on a bill item, but we have. And listen, I've gotten my back hairs up like you have, and I get it. It's emotional, and because you're passionate for what you're doing. But, you know, it's unfortunate that, you know, I don't think we should ever be, you know, yelling up here at one another. And I get, it's an emotional thing, and everybody's passionate, but I just wanted you to hear on the record my reason for voting no tonight.
Commissioner, I appreciate your view. My point, and I want to be very clear about this, has nothing associated with how I personally feel for any of my commissioners. I have nothing but the deepest respect for all of you. We work together. We work together for the betterment of the town always. I agree that we do, from time to time, have a need to disagree on a point, okay? In my particular case, I have always gone out of my way to be clear about what my position is, and I don't let that slide. So to the extent that I'm feeling emotion about this, yes, I have frustration about this because I feel very strongly that I thoroughly researched something. And I did the extra work, right, to make sure that I was doing something that I felt was on target. I agree that we can philosophically disagree about something, but in my particular case, I felt that there was a thoroughness to this. So I appreciate all of your views, and that's why I said I'll talk to you personally about that.
Anybody else wish to address the board commissioners this evening?
Yes, good evening. Tammy Rossi, 28, Colonial Terrace. I have a few questions this evening. First question is, has the state provided the amount Nutley will be receiving this year?
Ms. Rossi, I wish they had. We have been on conversations with them every day, and multiple times today, I was on the phone with them, trying to get an answer to that. They have not made that determination. I need to put forward a final budget adoption, which we haven't done yet, right? We've only had the public hearing. We haven't been able to adopt because I need that number. I will be in Trenton tomorrow, trying to resolve whatever is holding it up. But I'm sorry, I wish I could give you a better answer. The state has not responded yet.
Okay, thank you for that. My next question is, three years ago, Commissioner Evans, you said you would schedule an open forum meeting to allow public feedback on the budget. Do you still intend to have that, or...
Yeah, I've been thinking about that because I think it's important that, what I've been thinking about is, Oprah requests are about documents. They're not about explanation or things like that, and unfortunately, the law doesn't allow for that. So I've been giving it a lot of thought that, yeah, there is an opportunity, and so I'm leaning more towards having an open discussion in some fashion. I haven't figured out yet what it would be, but I've been thinking about that a lot.
Okay. My next question is, there was an Oprah request inquiring about a fire department policy and procedure manual, and the response by the Nutley Township Municipal Clerk on June 22, 2018 read as follows pursuant to request 382A-18, no document. So is there, in fact, no policy and procedure manual for the fire department?
I think that's a question for our attorney.
When we get an Oprah request like that, we forward it to the appropriate department and ask them if a document that has been identified by the requester exists. We do not vary from it. We just look for that particular document. If it's not called that, or we don't have anything like that, then we respond in the manner that we did. That was the response we got from the fire department.
Is, are there any actions being taken to ensure there is a manual in place for that? Shouldn't the fire department have that?
The fire department has always had rules and regulations, and they are documented. So, I mean, I kind of, you know...
There may not be a manual, Commissioner, or maybe just separate policies, but this was a request for a manual. I kind of remember it. I don't remember it exactly, but...
Tammy, you requested that?
I did not.
I did.
You did?
It was a manual.
Okay.
It's a fire decision period. Handicapped people have this form right now.
Then I don't think, I recall that. There's no document specific to that.
It's a federal law.
Yeah.
Okay. And then my next question is, Mr. Jena Tempa, what is the current status of the Nutley...
Excuse me one second. Just, you know, I know that we don't want to get off base here, Mayor, and I know we don't want people asking questions from the crowd, but just to answer, Mr. Moore, as this information comes back to me, the reason why we don't have that document is because every building is different, and even this one, in case of an emergency. So when you ask, "How would you exit a handicapped person?" God forbid of a fire or something traumatic. Is that what your question was?
It's called smoke. That's what's supposed to be up here. It's supposed to last one hour. It was the first thing that happened, was the elevator shut down. How do you get a handicapped person into this building?
Well, I asked the chief that question, okay, because now it's coming back to me. I asked him that, and he stated to me that they don't have a plan in effect because if a fire started in the front of the building, it would change the plan. If it started in the back, if the fire was here, if there was, you know, the ceiling caved in. So as the emergency comes in, from what the professionals are telling me, Mr. Moore, that's how they handle it. It's kind of, when they get to a scene, that's when the training and all that stuff kicks in.
The federal state controls it.
I'll look into that. Write that down, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Jena Tempa, just curious because I know it's been brought up in the past. What is the current status of the Nutley Township Employee Handbook?
It's sitting on my desk. We finally approved it, don't we?
Oh, so it's done, but it just needs to be proofed?
It's in the draft form of trying to...
Okay. What process is being used to complete this? Does each commissioner have their own employee handbook?
No, it's a townwide one. Ultimately, when I finish the draft, I'll send them each a copy for their review, but it's really just a modification of our existing one, one that was created by the MEL, which is really basically a format that we use. We just have to input all of our own individual separate policies. So that's where the hard part comes because we're trying to make sure that we have what we need in the manual. So we have, the basics of our existing manual are sufficient, but we want to upgrade it, that's all.
Okay, great. I have one last question.
Mayor, can I get something to that? Because I am, in fact, the secretary to the MEL, and I had this conversation with Mr. Jena Tempa not so long ago. We have until the end of the year to update that manual, but part of that update includes things like cybersecurity. It includes things like policies for our zoning board and our planning board relative to land use and exposure of the members that volunteer on those committees. And the latest one, we had a JIF meeting today, of which I'm the chairman of, all right, was we were talking about policies relative to public officials and Facebook. Because I can speak for myself, for some of us who are a bit older and not that high-tech, all right, we need guidance. I mean, my Facebook interaction most of the time is happy birthday, happy anniversary, and liking something. But there are those that communicate extensively on Facebook, and there are guidelines that need to be prepared that the MEL attorney is, in fact, preparing. And I know he's in conversation continuously, not only with our JIF attorney, but also with Mr. Jena Tempa and all the other attorneys for our members.
Do you intend to have any policy regarding personal use of town vehicles?
I believe we already have that policy in place.
Do you have that in place?
Yes, we do.
There is a policy for that? Okay. And then my one last question. As you may or may not know, there is a petition for term limits on quasi-judicial boards in town, and that includes the planning board, the zoning board, the rent levelling board, and the library board. Can each commissioner comment on whether or not you support term limits for these quasi-judicial boards?
Ms. Rossi, as you know, I already spoke with you. I think these are volunteer boards. We have a difficult time enough getting volunteers to fill these boards, so we're going to dedicate the amount of time, and I am not in favor of term limits for volunteer boards. I think we'll be in a situation where we'll be unable to get people to serve. And that's my opinion.
Okay, because I get a different story from people who have asked to be on the board and been told they will never have an opportunity to serve. So I'm just asking. Okay, Mr. Rogers, please.
Yeah, I always have support of term limits. So yes, I'm in favor of term limits.
Thank you. Commissioner Petracca?
I have heard a lot of scuttlebutt about this, you know, on websites and around town. I would have to tell you, I would like to look into it a little bit more before I give my opinion. I think what the mayor said when I was sitting in his chair a few years ago, which is a tough chair to sit in, I would say that it is difficult at times, you know. When I was mayor and looking for people, it was difficult to, you know, everybody wants to do it until it's time to do it. But saying that, I think that there are things that need to change on those boards, a few different things. And I would raise that at another time.
Commissioner Tucci?
Sure. I think there is a danger in term limits, all right? Because when you have folks who are intelligent and qualified to serve, you don't want to just turn them out because their time is up, all right? But I will admit, for some folks, maybe their time should be up. So like Commissioner Petracca, I need to investigate this a little more because I'm kind of torn. I would love to retain the folks who have been contributing and making the hard calls and doing the investigations and putting the time in, all right? But on the other hand, I mean, there are some folks who have been there in the past for years and years, and they're kind of institutionalized, and I'm not necessarily in favor of that. But I'm going to look into it a bit more, and I'll have a more definitive answer for you probably the next time you ask.
Thank you. And Commissioner Evans?
Ms. Rossi, I'm similar to Commissioner Tucci. You know, the... Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
So similar to Commissioner Tucci, it's a question that really needs a lot of thought because like my other commissioners, if you have somebody who has invested the time to go to class, to learn, and actually you garner a lot of experience and, in fact, intellectual capital associated with that experience, it's very hard to replace that. Where I'm wrestling, what I'm wrestling with is, when is it obvious that someone has reached the point where they no longer have the passion to do the investigative work that's necessary to sit on a quasi-judicial board? And that's the, like Commissioner Tucci, that's the question that I'm wrestling with. I agree with the mayor that volunteers are hard to come by. People who are willing to commit the time to go through each application that comes before the board, to listen to the testimony, to preserve their objectivity, but do the investigative work is, there is a point in time when that passion wanes and there's an opportunity to replace. I don't know if that comes with an automatic term that says it expires automatically, or some type of sort of review and assessment of what somebody is doing to see whether or not they still have the capacity to serve in a very effective way. So I have to think about that more, but that's, I want to share with you where my head's at.
I just want to make a distinction. There is a distinction between reappointing somebody who, as Commissioner Tucci said, maybe their time has come, and just automatically reappointing. So I don't think term limits really resolves that issue. I think that whoever's making the appointment, that resolves that issue. So everybody has a term, right? So when the term is up, sometimes it's time to go.
Right. But if you look at the number of years that quite a few members of the planning board have served, it's greater than 15 years. That's a mighty long time. And I'm sure you're aware of the great changes Nutley's going through. It's no longer a, I think it was called a sleepy community. It's far from a sleepy community. With a density of over 9,000 per square mile, we're now becoming an urban community with all of the developing of apartments and anticipated apartments from On3. Gene Diaz came clean, and he said the traffic behind Roche is going to be an atrocity during rush hour every morning.
I don't think Mr. Diaz said that.
He said there is going to be heavy traffic in the mornings. I was here, I heard him say it.
He didn't say it was going to be an atrocity.
It's...
So, going to quote him, quote him correctly.
Okay. But still, heavy traffic to me is an atrocity because that intersection is not equipped to deal with heavy, heavy traffic. So that's, it's just a part because now you're not only affecting Bloomfield and Kingsland, people who live in my neighborhood or have to look for other ways to get into New York. So then that congests the rest of the town.
I can assure you, Ms. Rossi, that we are going to look at the traffic that's generated as On3, we get the full picture of what On3 is going to look like.
But with regard to planning boards, you know, the developing that's going on in town, the infrastructure in this town isn't even set up to handle the growing population. Our schools are already at maximum capacity. Our schools are already at maximum capacity. You admitted that we were at the maximum capacity for water usage. And how much more can this town handle before you start compromising the quality of life? So it's just something I ask for you to consider. Thank you.
If I could make a comment, Mayor, I have to tell you, Ms. Rossi, I am very concerned and I'm about the residential that might go on the Roche property. I'm a firm believer in that that was commercial property. I think there's a big influx of commercial that's coming in there, like Modern Meadow, Ralph Lauren, all that. And I have to be sold on the residential, which I'm not right now. And I hear what you're saying. However, you know, the way that I feel about, you know, at one time Roche had 10,000 people working there in their prime. You know, there's a lot of businesses in that area, Franklin Avenue, including mine on Bloomfield Avenue. You have meal, you have the pub there. I could tell you, when that, when Roche closed, it hurt all those local businesses. Any businessman that I've talked to, it's been really struck, you know. And I have to tell you, you know, I drove by Roche today, and I saw all those cars back in the parking lot. They have over 1,000 students in Seton Hall Medical School, Seton Hall Hackensack Medical School, I should say. I had people in there in my store from Seton Hall. I mean, it is lovely to see that. But I hear you about the traffic and that stuff, too. So I think that what we've always tried to do is strike a balance here, you know, of, you know, how do we collect tax ratables? How do we keep the taxes somewhat level where they're not rising worse than, you know, they could be? And, you know, it was no secret when Roche left, and Commissioner Evans could tell you, you know, restore this story again, that, you know, we lost a lot of ratables there. You know, so like I always said, you can't have it both ways. You can't say, we don't want any development, and we want our taxes to just stay the same because the costs go up and that's not happening. But I have to tell you, I think that from, again, when I was the mayor here and we were working on Roche and Commissioner Tucci and all the commissioners, it was doom and gloom over, it was doom and gloom over there. They were saying that we were 20 years out, Commissioner Tucci, right, Mayor? 20 years out from fixing that problem. And I have to tell you, to see those cars in those lots and have companies like Ralph Lauren come in and other interested parties, it is refreshing. But again, the residential piece, I am very up in the air about that on that side at this point.
Now that you brought up taxes, you know, I think people in town have become very sensitive to the increase in taxes and knowing...
Ms. Rossi, just please try to finish up because your five minutes has been about 10 minutes.
Okay. Knowing that the loss in revenue we have from Roche, is it really prudent to give the increases in salaries? And some of these salaries, I'm sorry for town employees, are exorbitant. I mean, and I'm not going to quote which specific positions, but there are some that are just inexcusably high. And, you know, at a time like this, when we're already stretched to give those types of raises, people are looking at that. And they're questioning, you know, whose side are all of you on? Because we're struggling. And when you work in your own silos and then you don't really talk to the Board of Ed on a regular basis to discuss what's landing on each taxpayer's plate, that also drives the community to lose confidence in the leadership. So I just want to leave you with that note.
Well, I'll comment on public safety as far as that. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but I'll just comment in my own department at this time. But, you know, in public safety, and I agree with you, I think some of the salaries are extremely high. However, this all started happening in 1970, Tammy. This didn't just happen with this board and all that stuff. When arbitration, which I think you're aware of, you know, which happens with police and fire, and back in the 70s, I believe they were given 6% and 7% increases, okay? But how do we be competitive? You know, how do you attract, you know, the talent, so to speak? You know, we have cops leaving Nutley every, well, I can't say every day, every year. And you know where they're going? And know where they're leaving? Because they can make more money somewhere else.
Sure.
And they're going to Bergen County. And so I don't think it's, I don't think the salary is fair to say that we are very generous. I mean, you know, people pretty much are getting 2% increases at this point. Let me just finish, okay? Which is below the state average. You know, for police and fire, there's towns that pull back the health contribution. Do you know the benefit that Nutley receives that all these cops, all the town people are paying in for their benefits? You know, and there's, you know, that act, that law sunsetted last year with Chris Christie. So that was, became another negotiable item, you know, that they're allowed to do. You know, if, you know, I went through the arbitration process, you know, and it is very difficult to spend all that money on arbitration for attorneys and professionals to come and argue your case. By the time you get done with that, you were better off giving your own guys these raises. So I agree with you. I think that some of the salaries are quite high. But I have to say, it's a state issue. I believe that, you know, Chris Christie was putting out a toolkit for all this arbitration stuff. You know, he started it. It never got finished. And it really ties your hands in negotiating with these people when you have that. So it's not like you could, in the private sector, you could say, listen, you know what, this is what we're willing to pay. This is what... When you're dealing with these unions, it becomes a very entrenched proposition.
I understand. And I realize I'm out of time. I would love to have heard from some of the other commissioners to explain some of their employee salaries in their departments. And that may have to wait till the next meeting. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the board of commissioners this evening?
I would really like to speak in defense of the workers. As a taxpayer, yeah, I'm concerned about how much money is spent. But if you look at the salaries of, say, clerks or whoever, some of these people have been working in the town for 20 years. So their salaries have gone up incrementally, and they are at a higher level. So I don't think it's fair to, yeah, some salaries, I think, are a little out of control. I will admit to that. But I don't think you're being fair as a taxpayer if you say, these people are making too much money, if you think of the years invested in working in the town.
Good point.
That's all.
Very good point.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board of commissioners this evening? Seeing none, can we have a motion to continue the meeting till Thursday at 5:00?
Do we need a motion to continue? Or we're just going to need a motion? So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpella.
Aye.
Time is 8:48.